Folks, how are you all? Good. Welcome to our meeting tonight. It's April ninth, I'm sorry, April eighth. Skip, skip, you guys, some of you. Two thousand twenty-four. If you would, please rise for a pledge allegiance and prayer from Councilmember Leslie Bezzel.
With all bow our heads, please. Heavenly Father, thank you for blessing us in all the ways that only you can. Please guide our decisions here this evening. Open our eyes and open our hearts so that we may see and serve those in need. Direct our steps towards selfless action and help us to always remember we are elected to do the will of those we serve. Please continue to bless our city, our state, and our nation. In Jesus's name we pray, amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible. Thank you. Madam Clerk, we have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Bezzel?
Here.
Councilmember Paulus?
Here.
Councilmember Pennington?
Here.
Councilmember Kraft?
Here.
Councilmember Myers? Councilmember Davidson? Councilmember Brill?
I'd like to make a motion to excuse Councilmembers Davidson and Brill, please.
Motion second, on favor?
Aye.
Close. Motion carried. All right. Are any agenda modifications to tonight's agenda? None. We'll let it stand as stated. For those of you that didn't get one, there's agenda out there on each door. So if you want to grab one just for kicks, they're out there so you can follow along with us. Is there an executive session request tonight?
Yes, there is, Mr. Mayor. Preparing for, conducting, or reviewing negotiations or bargaining sessions with public employees concerning their compensation or other terms and conditions of their employment to consider the employment dismissal, discipline, or compensation of a public employee or official, and to consider the purchase, sale, or other disposition of property for public purposes. Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion for executive session for the reasons stated by the city.
Second. Motion in second, roll call.
Councilmember Bezzel?
Yes.
Councilmember Paulus?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Councilmember Kraft?
Yes.
Councilmember Myers?
All right. At this time, we're going to have a special presentation by one of our members of staff. It's going to be fun. He and I work on this project quite a bit, so it's going to be good.
Thank you, Mayor. Jason, can we start the presentation? All right, excellent. Hi, I'm Nathaniel Kaelin with our Development Services Department. Going to talk to you tonight about the launch of a program known as Flavors of Fairfield. Kind of hard to follow a once-in-generation eclipse, but I think we got something exciting to highlight. So let's get right into it. So staff over the years, before my time with the city, really identified that we have kind of a hidden gem here in Fairfield. We have a number of locally-owned, authentic restaurants, international restaurants, dotting Route Four and other parts of the city. We actually have a couple dozen. These are just six that I've highlighted on this slide. Mafongo City is something new on the south end of Route Four. They serve this incotum mafongo that's from the Dominican Republic. That's what you're seeing in the middle of the slide. On the northern Route Four side, we have Hot and Spicy and Indian and Nepali restaurant, which has been really well-received. Jungle Jam, we have Bud District Sensi, which has pho, obviously, and other Vietnamese dishes. Obviously, many of you probably know about Caruso's, fine Italian. Casino Mexicana, that is a Mexican restaurant that's actually in a gas station at the corner of Route Four and Sims Road, and highly regarded. Trinity Diner down on the south end, they serve African fare. And again, this is just about 25% of the different ethnic international restaurants in the city. And staff recognized this back in 2019. We met with Travel Butler County, the county's travel organization, and said, hey, we think we might have something here. You know, you guys have the Donut Trail, and you know, do we have something unique here? And it was not a hard sell. Basically, Travel Butler County already knew about all the international restaurants here. Some of them had been written up in Cincinnati publications and otherwise. And so we started talking to them about what could we do. And we had a meeting in March 2020, just as the pandemic was hitting. And we said, well, we better put the brakes on that and see where restaurants land at the end of things. So we came back to them last year and said, hey, can we re-explore this? And so that's what we're launching here in two days, Flavors of Fairfield, a special promotion that I'll explain to you. It really is to highlight the restaurants within Fairfield that are serving international fare, locally-owned, and really, again, an asset to our community. So when we put together the list of restaurants, we thought maybe we had a dozen or so. We actually found we have basically two dozen. We used the criteria of they had to be locally-owned. Their menu had to be, which meant that basically they were not a chain restaurant, less than five locations. They had to serve non-American fare primarily on their menu. And that shook out to 21 different restaurants and three bakeries. We have three Hispanic bakeries that are part of the program as well. All of them will have a decal with that colorful logo on their front door. They're also going to have a poster inside with a unique code, and I'll let you know what that is for. So Travel Butler County, they are going to be marketing this program all throughout the region, but also in neighboring regions. This is a promotion for city of Fairfield residents, but it's also to get people to come from the Cincinnati region and other regions and really identify Fairfield as kind of a foodie hotspot, a place to come so we can increase our restaurant spending and hopefully generate additional restaurants. And the way that someone is attracted and participates is they go to flavorsoffairfield.com, and that is set up through a platform called Ben Wango. It's not an app, but it sort of functions like an app. You create an account on that, you can download it, it'll load on your phone like an app on your home screen. And when you go to restaurants, you just simply check in. It's a very simple intuitive process. You go into the restaurant, if you're there, each restaurant is geo-fenced, so you have to be there. You just select the restaurant on your phone. All 24 restaurants and bakeries are in there with a menu and pictures of the restaurants. You select that restaurant, put in the code that's on the poster on the wall, and it checks off that you've been there. And the reason you want to do that is because there are incentives, there are prizes. And there's basically two levels. So if you get four check-ins, meaning maybe over the five weeks or so of the program, you go to three restaurants and one bakery, you get the souvenir. It's a medal, and Greg's going to pass it around. It's really fun.
One fork.
It's a spork, yeah, and it's pretty heavy duty.
It's heavy, yeah.
Travel Butler County came up with that, and you're a first-place foodie. That's the reward. So you go to Jungle Jam or Travel Butler County and pick that up. And then there's a larger prize if you visit eight different establishments and check in. We actually have gift cards. You can be entered into a chance to win. We have two $500 and $1,000, and two $1,000 gift cards to Jungle Jam. That's the grand prize, I guess, if you win the $1,000. But the spork is pretty cool, too, so. Kind of kitschy and fun. So that's the quick summary of the program. Again, our goals are really just to highlight the local restaurants in Fairfield, you know, establish and raise our profile in the region. We have something unique here, and we want to share it and support our local businesses. I encourage and challenge all council members to get out there and earn your medal, and it'd be kind of fun to see you all wearing them at the second meeting in May or something.
Yeah.
Know the mayor's going to get it.
We, Nathaniel and I go out to all these restaurants, especially when they're new into the community, and we videotape our spotlight. And it is amazing every time with the smells, the food that they come out to show us that they've made. The bakery, I didn't even know there were such things. We have a Hispanic bakery by, oh man, underneath the pool hall.
Alcapoco.
Alcapoco, there you go. But it's by them, it's right underneath them. And I was in there the other day, and that was phenomenal. And they have some homemade ice creams there that were, yeah, ice cream, yeah. That I've never had before. So I encourage everybody to attend these places. They are definitely cool. So thank you for presenting, and thank you for coming up with this. This is a great idea.
I got to give a shout out to Greg, too. He had an idea about this 10 years ago, so we're finally fulfilling his vision.
Well, good for you guys. Encourage residents out there who are watching TV, land, put those dates down, and let's go out and encourage our local restaurants and stay visiting them. So even stretch your palate a little bit. I've tasted things I thought I would never, ever order anywhere I love. So we go to Befo Vietnam all the time, so it's really cool. All righty, moving next. Thank you, guys. Citizens' comments. If you're going to comment about anything that's on the agenda, hold off on that because this is just for other comments, like you want to talk about something in general, the eclipse today, or how great we are, or something, you know? But if you want to talk about something that's on the agenda, you can hold off for that time, so. Anybody else? Council reports? Anything down here, Mr. Myers? Down here?
Yes, I've got, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. Got a few things here. And special thanks to Lori for always putting all of these great things together. The Fairfield Fire Department is sponsoring two community blood drives. One on May 13th from 2:00 to 6:00 p.m. at the fire headquarters, and one on May 15th from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. at the Fairfield Farmers Market located in the Village Green. Appointments can be scheduled by calling 1-800-388-GIVE or by using the QR code in the Fairfield flyer, and sponsor is number 193. The second item is a mobile mammogram van will be in the parking lot of the Fairfield Community Arts Center on June 5th from 8:30 to 10:30 a.m. And appointments can be made by calling 513-584-PINK. The third item is the Junior Police Academy runs from June 10th to the 14th from 8:00 a.m. to noon at the police department. Registration is required and is limited. Deadline to register is May 20th. Safety Town, which is always popular, will have two sessions this summer. The first session will be June 17th through the 21st, the second, the June 24th through the 28th. Both sessions run from 9:30 a.m. to 11:30 a.m. in Harbin Park. Registration is required, and there is a deadline for that on May 27th. And finally, probably one of the most popular items is a Touch a Truck event that will be held this year, June 28th, from 9:00 a.m. to noon at Village Green Park. So a lot going on, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Chief, the Junior Police Academy, what's the age for that? Sorry, I put, could I?
It's generally reserved for sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. We can make exceptions depending on how many people apply.
Okay, and it's held at the police station?
It's held at various locations throughout the city.
Okay, cool. Thank you, June 10th, 14th. All right, down this way. Go ahead.
Okay, I have a little announcement. On the Public Utilities Department is pleased to announce that the city's 2023 Drinking Water Quality Report is now available online on the city's water division webpage. For more information, visit fairfield-city.org. This report, required by U.S.E.P.A., provides an overall view of the water quality testing results from Fairfield's water treatment plant from 2023. In 2023, the city met or exceeded all national standards required for this production of our drinking water. Hard copies are, this report is available here at the city building or upon request by calling 513-858-7775. You want to add anything to that, Adam?
No, ma'am.
Well, good job, good job. I'll just say that. Thank you. That's all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Anybody else over here?
Yeah, I have something as well. City of Fairfield has been approved for funding by the Ohio-Kentucky-Indiana Regional Council of Governments for the installation of electric vehicle charging stations at the library, Harbin Park, and Waterworks Park. OKI approved the funding for $126,945 in federal carbon reduction funds and Ohio toll revenue credits. This covers 100% of our estimated cost for the project. OKI is helping local communities award federal funding by supplying the 20% local match on our behalf. Public Works will work with O.D., O.T. on the implementation and plans to start the project later this year and have them on operational, and have them operational, excuse me, by late 2024, early 2025. We'd like to recognize our city engineer, Nick Dill. For his efforts in putting this grant application together, Nick was also previously successful in getting a grant for the city's first public EV charging station at the Community Arts Center and for coordinating the installation. For those who have never done a grant application before, it is a long, drawn-out, and tedious process. So the fact that the team here in Fairfield just pays such strict attention to applying for extra outside monies is crucial for our, not only our success as a community, but then also crucial for utilizing tax dollars that are available across just the local area, but from a federal standpoint as well. So then, thank you for you and your team for being diligent with that.
Adam, this coordinates directly into our sustainability plan is a nice jumpstart, too, isn't it?
I wasn't sure which Adam he was speaking to, but I will say, yes. Absolutely, yeah. It's a good jumpstart for what we're trying to do sustainability-wise, absolutely.
Fantastic, thanks.
And I'm going to be very brief. Councilman Myers gave a very good overview of the events happening in the park. As the weather warms up, we are more and more active in our parks. So please be sure to check the website and social media pages regularly because we have all kinds of things going on all the time. And I wanted to give a special thank you and shout out to Mandy and her team for a very successful total eclipse of the parks. Today, all of our parks were full of people looking at the eclipse, so it was a big hit. Thank you very much.
All righty, well, I was going to do the same thing. I'm going to do two things. In eighth grade, I had a government teacher named Mr. Massey, and he kind of formed me as I am today. And he's sitting out there in the crowd, so I'm going to recognize Mr. Massey as my eighth-grade government history teacher. Owe it all to you, sir. And then, secondly, you're right, the Parks Department, we held, I was at Village Green today, and there was probably 500 to 1,000 people there. It was really cool. I was at the playground yesterday, and multiple people asked us, which park in the park would be the best for viewing? And I'm going, well, it could be, so, but it was literally a big success. People from all over were coming from here. It was amazing. Covington and Lexington, and it was just on and on and on. Everywhere I asked people, it was just a great event. So kudos to the Parks Department, April, and really the whole team. It was a cool, cool event. I'm sure everybody here at some time today saw it, so I won't go any further. So, all righty. Now we'll move on to a public hearing. Madam Clerk, can you read, we'll call the Planning Commission.
Commissioner Medler? Commissioner O'Brien? Commissioner Hassler? Commissioner Alewski? Commissioner Davidson? Commissioner Robertson?
All right. On favor? All righty. Ma'am, all yours.
I have two things. First of all, if we can have the presentation put up on the screens, and while we're doing that, I will let our clerk of counsel read the public hearing into the minute.
All property owners and citizens of Fairfield, Ohio, are hereby notified that a joint public hearing between the Planning Commission and City Council has been scheduled for 7 o'clock p.m. on Monday, April 8th, 2024, at the Fairfield Municipal Building at 5350 Pleasant Avenue, Fairfield, Ohio, 45014. The purpose of the hearing is to solicit citizen input regarding the submission of a concept and final development plan for a planned unit development for a senior-assisted living facility. The property is currently zoned A1 agricultural and estate residence district. Parties that wish to review the application may do so by visiting the Development Services Department located at the Fairfield Municipal Building or on the Development Services page on the city website at www.fairfield-city.org devservices. Questions may be directed to the department by telephone at 513-867-5345 or via email at development@fairfieldoh.gov. The department is open Monday through Friday between the hours of 8 o'clock a.m. and 5 o'clock p.m.
Okay, good evening. My name is Erin Lynn. I'm the planning manager for the city. Before I start my presentation, I would like to state that we will have a small presentation from the applicant. Lindsay McLaughlin from Senior, Optimized Senior Housing will be here to give her presentation, and she will follow up after me. So you're all familiar with the site. It's the One Way Farm site. It's been around since the early 1990s and has operated as a home for children. Until recently, the applicant, Optimized Senior Housing, is proposing to purchase the site and operate it as a residential assisted living facility for seniors. Now, that's important, and Lindsay will get into that a little bit more detail, but residential assisted living is different than what you typically see as an institutional senior living. This type of concept is designed to provide a small, home-like environment for those who need additional care, you know, for daily activities. It provides a communal living area that typically consists of your living room, your dining room, and your kitchen. And then there's your own private bedrooms, and each would have a bathroom with that. So it's a small-scale setting as opposed to a larger institutional type. Talk about the site. The site's unique. It is located in two jurisdictions. The front half, what fronts on River Road, is in the city of Fairfield. The back portion that butts the gravel mining operation is in Fairfield Township. It's a total of 12 acres. There's about five and a half acres that's located in the Fairfield site. The site is pretty much surrounded by single-family houses. However, to the south of it, directly to the south, is a small farm. And then, as I mentioned, to the west is the gravel, or the gravel operation. There are three parcels that are located in Fairfield. There are two basically undeveloped or vacant parcels. You can see one of them has the walking trail on it to the south. And then the other one has a 3,800-square-foot building that's occupied on there with a parking lot in front and two curb cuts on River Road. In the past, this building was used for administrative offices as well as a multipurpose gathering room. The applicant is proposing to renovate the existing building in Fairfield. And see if I can do this right. Can you all see a mouse up there? You can't see a mouse? And do we have a pointer? That works? Okay, fair enough. I'll just have to use my.
There's something here. I don't know.
I'll just use my descriptive, descriptive words. So they are proposing to put on, in addition to a 5,700-square-foot addition on the back of the building. So if you can kind of see where the back of the building is, the front, the portion that doesn't jut out to the back, the other portion is where the addition is going to go. And I'll have some better picture, but I just kind of wanted to show you on this aerial of where that addition is going. And then they are also proposing a future phase, maybe in a couple years, to locate two one-story ranch-style buildings on the southern half within the open green area. Not, it won't go as far as the vegetation line of trees. That will remain as a buffer. And then they're also proposing to use the two buildings in Fairfield Township, the two residential units. They're going to convert those to memory care units, and they would each be able to have up to six residents living in those buildings. In addition, they have two other metal buildings in Fairfield Township. The one closest to the road that takes you back to the gravel mining used to be the thrift store. They're going to convert that to an adult daycare facility, and then the other building will just be used for storage and other administrative purposes. The applicant will be required to go through a similar process that they're going through tonight in the township. They're starting here first, and then they should be following up pretty soon with the meetings in the township. This is just a picture of the site. We're all familiar with this. You can see the existing building, and in the background, you can see the two residential buildings in the township. Behind those trees is that open space area where they plan the future houses. I'm sorry, the future buildings. This is just a little bit better picture. You can, I'm just kind of zoomed in. On the right, again, you can see the residential houses. And then that green area right in front on the left, that's where the future buildings would be located. This is the site plan, so let me just kind of show you this. This is just for the Fairfield portion. We're facing north at the top. On the right is River Road. On the left, in white, are these two orange buildings. Those are the residential buildings in Fairfield Township. So at the top of it, the orange, that is the existing building. So the yellow is where the addition is going. So that's where you can kind of see where they're, where they're constructing that. That building will be able to house up to 24 residential units. The future building, they're kind of stacked, one behind the other. So really, from River Road, all you would see is technically one building. In the center between the buildings is a courtyard that will have kind of like a walkway that goes between them that will be covered. You kind of see that in that little white rectangle area, and then as well, you can see the parking. Each building will be 7,000 square feet, and it can house up to 16 residents. All residential buildings will be staffed 24 hours a day, seven days a week, with an aide to provide support to the residents. Greg Kathman and I, a couple weeks ago, had the opportunity to visit one of their locations in Lebanon. It's, again, it's a small, small facility. They have two independent living buildings, two residential assisted living buildings, and one memory care building. What you see in these pictures is exactly what they're going to build in our location, is what they're proposing. You can see it's mostly brick. There is some stone accent on it. At the top of the picture, the top is the front entrance, and then the bottom is kind of like a side view, so you can see how they will be laid out and how close they will be to each other.
Hey, Erin, can you go, can you go back two slides, please? One more. So those two in the back, now that's Fairfield Township, right?
Correct.
On the lower, the left-hand picture.
Correct.
And the whites, I don't know what the white.
The white and the way back on the right? That's one of the metal, metal buildings that are on the Fairfield Township property. That's what they're going to use for storage.
Thank you, Erin.
Or, you know what, that might be, there's a couple houses. I think if I'm looking at this, it could be the back. No, it is the storage. Okay, because there are a couple.
Buildings are storage.
There are a couple residences that butt this on, on that access road, so yes. So this is. Um, so this is just, again, um, this is the view from the side and I just, here I just wanted to show you what it looks like in between the two buildings. And this is the courtyard area for where the residents can hang out outside and, and socialize and do some activities. Um, and then I kind of wanted to show you what the inside looked like and this is a, pictures from a couple of different units. Um, this is a whole communal living concept, so the top is obviously the kitchen, the bottom is the, um, the, the, the dining area with the kitchen in the background and then they have a living room. Um, and then if you kind of look back in the top right picture on the left-hand side, it's a hallway that leads back to the individual, um, rooms, um, for the residents. Um, so this is just an example of what the, the, the two floor plans would look like and why I'm showing this to you is because I just want to show you how it's laid out. Again, again, on the left, it's the existing building with the proposed addition and then on the right is that one, one of the proposed buildings, not both of them, just one of them. But the yellow represents the living areas, the bedroom areas. The green is the communal area, so again, it's kind of centrally located. And again, it's, the intent is to have small-scale to allow them to feel like a family. Um, and then the orange is just kind of like an administrative office laundry, storage. So, I just wanted to, um, call it your attention to that. Uh, so this is what the proposed elevation will look like for the existing building. Um, they are proposing to do, um, exterior improvements to the building and to the site. Um, because this building was built in the early nineties, um, they wanted to make it a little bit more modern in appearance, just update it. So, they are gonna paint it the whole entire thing white, um, add a black, a new, new roof with black shingles to the roof. Um, and then they're gonna do the same with the new building. As, as I mentioned before, the pictures you saw from Lebanon, that's what they're gonna build, but they're gonna paint it white. So, it's gonna look residential in nature as well. And then they're also going to be painting the two white, the two buildings in the township white as well. So, you're gonna have one uniform appearance. Uh, here is my, um, slide that I show in every picture. Tonight is the public hearing. Um, tomorrow, um, I'm sorry, tomorrow, Wednesday at six o'clock, um, in this room is Planning Commission. I do want to state for, um, everybody that's here tonight, um, that, we're working on quorum for that. Um, this is very unusual. Normally, we have quorum, but we have some unusual circumstances. Um, so please, if you plan to be here Wednesday, check back on the Development Services homepage or call our office Development Services Department and we'll let you know if we are not having the meeting or if you want to make sure we are having the meeting. We have to have four Planning Commission members and, um, we are working on it. So, we're hoping that we do have a meeting on Wednesday. Um, there are actually two more things that I want to add. Um, there are more housekeeping items, um, that, as you remember, when we do a PUD, the two-step process, we have the concept plan and we have the development plan and typically we hear those two separately. And a good example of that was when we did the Mercy Mixed Use. They came in and got the concept plan because it was multiple lots. They didn't have any end users except for their, um, their office building. Um, and then they would come back for each individual building and we would know exactly what they're doing. Um, the, the zoning code allows you to combine the two and hear them at one time. And that's what they're doing tonight. And the purpose of that is, is that when you have basically one small site or one small lot or project, there's no sense in doing both because you'll be repeating the exact same thing. We know what the buildings are gonna look like. Um, we know what the peruses are proposed. So, I just wanted you to understand that, um, that we, that they would not, should this get approved, they would not come back for a final development plan. They're doing both, um, at this time through the process. And then the second thing is, is I want to, um, to, to just let the audience know is that, oh, PUD is a, um, site-specific zoning. So, what that means is that what gets approved for a PUD is exactly what you see. It's the exact number of buildings, it's the exact color of the buildings, it's the exact layout. If they wanted to increase the density by maybe building another building or doing anything else, they'd have to come back to City Council. Um, if they wanted to, um, do anything, um, change the use of the property, they would have to come back to City Council. What they would get approved for is the use, which is this assisted living, and what they would get approved for is the exact number of units and the exact number of buildings. So, with that said, I'm happy to have any questions. If not, um, the applicant can be here, is here to, to, um, give a little overview of her, her business. So, in the existing building, they're putting an addition on. There'll be a total of twenty-four units. And then in, in each of the, um, two buildings that they're gonna build in the, in their, their Phase Two, um, would be sixteen units in each building, so that would be thirty-two units. In the Fairfield Township, which is a separate approval process, that would be six units in each of the buildings. That's a total of twelve.
Before anybody else asks some questions, we're gonna go ahead and let the applicant do a little presentation first, because that'll answer most of your questions. And then we're gonna explain this process. If you want to back up, just back up to the, uh, schedule there, so these people know, we're gonna, you know, discuss this tonight. It's really important. Can you go back to-
I have to get out of this.
Oh, never mind. This is hers. Never mind.
I'd be happy to at the end.
There you go. And when I looked down, I saw hers up there, so.
Good evening. Thank you so much, Erin. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members for this opportunity to present about optimized senior living here tonight. My name's Lindsay McLaughlin. I am a registered nurse. I'm also the founder and co-owner of Optimize Senior Living. We currently are located in Lebanon and Kettering and managing in Loveland and Newtown. We are locally family-owned and operated, nurse and veteran-owned and operated as well. Um, the reason we started optimized senior living was very personal. Um, this was my grandma and we were going to put her into assisted living and we were making a lot of phone calls and realizing there were a lot of games being played out there. There wasn't a lot of transparency with care and with what assisted living really means. And we did end up putting her in, in a facility and we thought, you know what, we can do this a whole lot better. And so, we started optimized and I believe that we do do it a whole lot better. Um, it's all about the care. It's about family. It's about providing the compassion and dignity and respect to these residents. So, we learned a lot through my grandma's experience in other facilities and unfortunately, we waited way too long to bring her, um, to us. And, um, she passed away three days after being with us. But when she got to the hospital, they said, you know, she had been neglected completely and had wounds all over her and, um, anyway, we do things differently. That's unacceptable in care. No senior deserves that. Um, as Erin showed before, this is a picture of one of our homes in Lebanon that we built. And the idea is truly to look, feel and smell like a home, just with more bedrooms. So, it is just a regular ranch-style home, just with a few more bedrooms. And the idea in our homes is that the residents are engaged and that they're social and that they're truly part of a community. This isn't a big facility. We truly call them homes and on the wings are just bedrooms and in the inside area is a communal space. And we really get our residents out of their room and engaging with others and really provide that personalized attention and care to them as well. Um, so in short, that's really what we're all about, is just providing that personalized care and attention to residents in a very family-style, um, home, home-type situation and providing the best care possible for our seniors in their local communities. That's all I got.
I do have one question. Um, great presentation. How many total residents do you, would you, um, expect at the, uh, proposed new facility?
So, in Fairfield, like she was saying, with the addition to the one home, the two back memory care homes, which would only have six residents per home, which means very personalized care, and then the two new buildings in Phase Two. A total, after all the phases, would be sixty-four residents.
That's including Fairfield Township?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions from council members?
Yes. How long have you been at your facility in Lebanon?
Yep, we started our company in Lebanon six years ago, building from the ground up out there. And I welcome anybody to come out and take a look and see what it's all about because it's truly a different feel. It's really a boutique style. Families are very happy there.
I'd highly recommend a visit. I've been out, checked it out. It is exactly what you're saying. It's very boutique, very home. Uh, it, it seems like they even bring their own, uh, lazy boys, because there's like seven of them all. None of them match, of course, but that's theirs, so it's, uh, it's really cool.
Yeah, yep, exactly.
Anybody else? Alright, comments from Planning Commission? So, they'll see you guys, uh, Wednesday night here at, uh, six o'clock. Uh, residents, she's gonna put that, uh-
I'm gonna put the, um, the, the site plan in. And then, if they have any questions, we can go off of that and then how about we follow up with the schedule again?
Okay. And just so you folks know, so it's, we're gonna turn it, the council turns it over to the Planning Commission. They're gonna go to a meeting similar to this in these same quarters, Wednesday hopefully. And, uh, that's where you get really into the nuts and bolts of, really, they, they get really into it. Uh, I was on the Planning Commission for many years, so I'm pretty familiar with it. Mr. Lipsky runs a good meeting and that's when every little detail, every little discussion will be brought out. You have plenty of time to talk and go back and forth. Uh, but if you want to speak now, you're welcome to, but you may want to hold off until you really see everything in great detail on Wednesday night. But you're welcome to speak tonight. So, if anybody would like to, you're welcome to just come up. You do need to state your name and address for the record. And by the way, I'm gonna mention one more thing. You, uh, this is, uh, I was gonna say Donovan. Lynn, uh, said it as a PUD, so I'm glad you explained that, that these planned unit developments, everything they say they're gonna do is exactly the way they're gonna do it. Uh, they cannot change once we approve things, so that's a really good thing.
Hi, my name is Marcus Payne. Um, I live at sixty-one nineteen East River Road, right there on the top left corner of the, the map that's up there. Um, many of you don't know me, but you know my grandmother, Barbara Condo. She's the one that started the One Way Farm and got everything up running, got all those buildings built. And honestly, I don't dislike the idea of what's happening here. What I have problems with, and I'm not sure if it's gonna be something I need to go to the Township for or here, is that everyone of my good neighbors who came today got this letter in the mail and it shows sort of the outlines of where their properties are, stuff like that. In the Township and also part of the city part where they're, on the addition of, uh, the office is what I know it as. I've spent my entire life on that property. Same with my mother back here. On those, it shows that part of the property that's being claimed is actually our property. The property lines are not correct to what was sent out, especially in the Fairfield Township area. I have on me is our actual property lines here. This here is my house. This is my mother's. This is the office right here with that addition they're talking about will be added. This L shape here is also part of our property, but in what was sent out, which is shown here, is claimed under what will go to Lindsay and her company. Um, so first off, I want to make sure that we're being respectful of property lines, that I'm not gonna lose property to this change, as well as also when all this construction happens, it's, and correct me if I'm wrong, this is going from agriculture residential to, or residential to a commercial prop- linked property, that, right? That's what this is all about, correct? When all this happens, there's gonna be a, we already have dust issues down there because of the gravel pit. We're all used to it. How much more dust and everything's gonna be picked up as all these, more buildings keep brought in, more construction, more buildings? It, I, I just hope that it's not gonna become unpleasant to live at my address or any of the other ones surrounding it from the constant changes that are gonna be happening. I understand there's gonna be multiple phases to it. Maybe they'll make it a little bit less, but I definitely want to make sure that property lines are being respected because the previous owners of the farm, after my grandmother had passed off when she had Alzheimer's, did not respect those boundaries and I had multiple issues, uh, make sure that my kids and my animals were safe. And I just want to make sure that that's gonna be respected when it's passed on to the new owners. That's my main complaint. I know other people have their things, but that's it for me. Just, please make sure you check those lines.
And she will take that into record there. So, if you want to take those plats, they'll just be a little bit of plat reading. Alright. Anybody else? Welcome to come up and state your name and address.
Hi, my name is Krista Hutzle. I live directly across the street from One Way Farm, sixty-one forty-six River Road. And my question is, what other properties in Fairfield were explored for, um, purchase for something like this, for this type of development?
Yeah, we're gonna, we're recording, so if you do re- Lindsay, you might stay up here for a minute if you want.
Um, yes, we've been looking for quite some time, probably about a year and a half, actually, at different properties that would be suitable for this. And, um, really the idea of residential assisted living is typically across the country. I mean, this is growing like crazy across the country. Um, but really, the, the idea typically is that they take a single-family home and renovate that and make that suitable for like ten residents or something. Um, our model is a little bit different because we do accommodate sixteen and make it more of a community, still with that home-like type setting. And we've also recognized that truly like in a, an HOA or something, that that's not really possible. Um, but where this is located is really great because of the, being so close to Coal Rain, Ross, and the referrals that we're getting and the people that we talk to across the, the area, they all say, there's just not enough places out that way. So, this can really be, um, a great location too for, um, for the assisted living and really where it's located.
And to your point, there are no concerns then about the massive increase in traffic that this is going to cause with the staff, the ambulances, the food deliveries, the dumpsters there. I don't see any dumpsters marked on your map, but I'm sure for that many units, you're gonna have to have several. To my point, I just feel strongly that this is really being crammed into a small space where it doesn't belong. And even within Fairfield, there are other properties available that would be more suitable and more accessible for the amount of access that you're going to need.
And I, and I completely respect that. And my family's been in Fairfield for generations and, um, so I understand. Um, but I will say, like, we're doing this in two phases because we need to really understand what the total need will be. Do I believe that the need could be for sixty-four? Absolutely. However, by accommodating twelve beds for memory care and twenty-four for assisted living, maybe that, that's all that there will be. Um, but we do have the PUD already set in place for that Phase Two, for another two buildings in a couple of years, or maybe it's only one more building. Um, but also, keep in mind with staffing, there, let's see, between all of these buildings and the most like during the day for staffing would be two, four, five, six, seven, eight and ten, ten or twelve staff there, um, which I know is more than right now. Um, but, uh, no, uh, we, it's twelve-hour shifts. Um, and, and I mean, there will be more traffic, but, um, but I will tell you too, like, there are so many times at night when I even go out to our Lebanon location, like, is anybody even here? And then you go in and we've got seven staff there, but they don't even have their cars. Um, and when it comes to ambulance, uh, we have a very nurse-centric, nurse-heavy team. So, we triage situations. We do things a little bit differently. It's not every single fall, nine-one-one is being called. We triage it. We talk to families and we really figure out what's the best course of action here instead of ambulance coming every single time. So, it's pretty infrequent that they're coming.
One last question. Um, so, I might understand that this, the rezoning has already taken place. That has been approved? It's re-zoned agricultural for the One Way Farm. So, the rezoning has been approved? That's done?
So, so the PUD is the rezoning. So, you're right, it is zoned A-one agriculture. Should it, they are requesting that it be rezoned to a PUD. A PUD is a type of a rezoning. So, it's, it's, this is the process that they would go through. So, they would get approval for the rezoning and for the site plan and for the layout of the, the development and for what the building looks like. They would get all of it done at one time.
Yeah, Wednesday at six.
So, right, so I, I will show the slide and I'll go over the slide one more time at the end of the meeting.
I live on sixty-one seventy-four East River Road, uh, down here. Uh, my major concern is that you're gonna have sixty-four residents there and then you're gonna have all the staffing that's gonna come down. You're gonna have medical staff, all kinds of stuff coming down here. And if you've taken a look and driven down River Road lately, you'd notice that there's gravel pit trucks and everything else coming down through there. It is horrendous. And you really need to stop and take a look at what you're doing down there. The One Way Farm was a mess-up. It's never happened. People got killed down there and everything else. There's too much going on down there. You need to seriously take a look at it.
Alright.
Mr. Mayor, if I, if I can add just one-
Ms. Mayor, if I can add just one more thing over here.
So, where's that coming from?
Sorry. I just wanted to point out to the council and everyone else in the audience, this property is currently being marketed for sale. So, this proposal is the first one that's made it this far. When One Way Farm started shutting down their operations, we at the staff level were very concerned about what types of applications, what types of proposals would be looking at this property. So, out of, you know, out of... When you start thinking about worst... Possible worst-case scenarios, that was a big concern. So, I would just... Would advise everyone who's in the room to think about the scale of requests that could have come in and where seniors falls in with some of these other uses that would be looking at a property like this.
I'd recommend you, or highly recommend you, being here at six o'clock. Were you going to say something, ma'am? Okay, go right ahead. It's okay. State your name and address.
Stella Lorai, five-nine-five River Bend Court. So, I'm down at the other end of River Road. I guess our question is, we just found out about this, and I'm wondering about the flow of traffic. I was here back in the time that they were putting the roundabout in and all the issues with trucks and stuff, and that was... The roundabout, I was told, was to prevent the trucks from being on the street or slowing down. I don't see trucks down on our end as much anymore, but a lot of speeders, so we've been working on that end down there. With that being said, I'm wondering, and this may be the... That ninety-degree curve right there as people are coming, will there be another roundabout? Are you going to be driving or... Or to accommodate the extra traffic? That's question one. And question two is, if this is all approved, when would this begin? And when are you possibly going to have it done? Twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six? Last of my questions. I do have a comment. I'm kind of on the fence. I have a stepbrother in Autobahn. I mean, I understand what you're doing. Great concept. I just don't think... With the theory, I'm not confident by it. I'm just being... All of a sudden, boom, there's a sign in the yard and presented to the neighborhood in there. So, I understand both parts.
Okay. You want to address the timeline if you want, then we'll move on.
As far as timeline goes, again, we still have to go through the township. And then, after that, to be purchasing as soon as possible and renovating those back two buildings to move forward with the memory care. And then, that front building that we're doing the big renovation on, that'll probably take six, seven, eight months to do that and then be able to open that. And like I said, the other two are Phase Two down the road. And keep in mind too, please, that the residents are not driving. And so, having four, five, six, seven cars there for those properties that are currently existing, it's really not a whole lot more than a couple of houses with teenagers that are driving and other family members too. So, again, you're welcome to come to Lebanon to really see that traffic flow and how that is. And there's forty-eight residents out there right now.
All right. One more, Erin, that's going to slide in here.
Oh, that's okay. Go ahead. Eighty Stone Meadows, so we're in the neighborhood right across the street. I had... Oh, sorry. I'm coming from the social work side of this. What level... I'm sorry. What level of care are the residents expected to be?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Level of care, it's kind of all over. Memory care, they're memory care. So, it will be locked down. It will be secured. And we are going to be doing a courtyard-style back there so they can be outside and be in a secure, safe environment. And then, the assisted living side, we go everywhere from people that are cognitively aware and just need a little bit of assistance with ADLs to somebody that is pretty high acuity. The idea is, once they move into our home, that they can live there until end of life, and we can do everything possible for them.
Okay, and what's the staff ratio?
It's typically like a... It's a low caregiver ratio. It's about a one to eight. In those back rooms, it'll be one to six with a floater in between. Like I said, we will have nursing twenty-four-seven as well. And so, with twenty-four residents there, we'd have three caregivers, an activity person, as well as our nursing managers.
So, how many nurses to how many aides?
So, there, it'd probably be one nurse to the twenty-four and the one to the other twelve because they only give meds. This is residential assisted living. You know, I'm not an expert out of that category. One nurse for twenty-four residents.
They're just... They're giving the meds.
And then, we have managers there.
Well, giving... I work in a facility right now, and giving meds is not... But he's always solid. I spent the whole day flopping back and forth. I'm not even medical staff because there weren't enough medical staff to cover what... And we have two nurses for patients.
No, no.
All right, so if we can, we'll continue this maybe on Wednesday night when the Planning Commission's going to be here. If you want to get detailed about that. I just... Yeah, I would recommend coming then because that way, the Planning Commission's going to have the advantage of discussing it in greater detail. So...
So, I'll just go over one more time the last slide.
There you go. This is important, folks, for you to remember.
So, tonight is a joint public hearing with Planning Commission and City Council. Wednesday is the Planning Commission again. Please check back with our office or website on Wednesday to verify that the meeting will occur. This is... This goes through a three readings through Planning Commission... I'm sorry, through City Council. So, after Planning Commission hears it, let's just say we hear it on the April tenth, and let's just say they make a recommendation on April tenth. Then, that recommendation is sent to Planning... I'm sorry, it's sent to City Council for a second reading. That would be April twenty-fourth. And then, there's a third reading two weeks later on May thirteenth. Now, if... And the third reading is the final reading. Now, if for some reason we don't meet on April tenth, push it back two more weeks. I can do a new schedule at the next Planning Commission meeting. But again, please check back to make sure we're having the meeting on the tenth.
That number's eight-six-seven...
Eight-six-seven-five-three-four-five is the office number.
Five-three-four-five.
And I just wanted to add to Erin's... Just so the folks in the audience know, the Planning Commission is a recomanndary body. So, there, they will make a recommendation at their meeting to approve or not approve. The final decision is made by City Council at their second and third readings. The third reading will be the time when they vote on this.
But Greg, there are... There is a potent... There's a potential between the Planning Commission would come back with recommendations, correct? They could. And then, the plan would get redeveloped, and then it'd take... It would stretch out a little bit here?
It's possible. So, the Planning Commission will get into a lot of specific details. And so, they may, after hearing discussion from the audience and discussion from the applicant, they may determine that... They may want the applicant to go back and revise their plan a little bit more. That would obviously take them some time. That would push it back. So, it depends how it goes Wednesday night, whether there'll be a recommendation or not.
You have a second Planning Commission meeting already in that, didn't you? I didn't... Did it...
No, I didn't have a second. I had a second reading.
Second reading, that's what it was. Okay. All right. Why would I encourage you all to show up Wednesday night at six in this building right here with those people back there? And we're going to move on to the rest of the meeting. You're welcome to stick around for a fun, enjoyable evening, or you're welcome to cut out. We'll give you about a thirty-second exit here, plan, and welcome you. Thanks for coming. Mr. Massey, good to see you there. I calculated it was fifty-four years... Fifty-four years ago, I had you in class. How can it be? That's pretty wild. I had a teacher in fifty-four years ago? How can that be? I'm not... All righty. Let's see here. Go over here, move this around. I'll get back to my computer. All right. Who's reading for Matt? All right. We have approval of the minutes before his hearing. Any additions or deletions will stand as read? Any old business? Councilmember Davidson.
Mr. Mayor, I'll be subbing in for Mr. Davidson this evening. I have an ordinance, amending ordinance number one-six-six-dash-one-eight... Excuse me, one-six-six-dash-eight-four, the codified ordinance of Fairfield, Ohio. Section one-one-four-one dot O-two, the city of Fairfield, Ohio. Zoning map by approving the concept and final development plan for the optimized senior living planned unit development on approximately five-point-six acres of land on three parcels located at six-one-three-one and six-one-five-one River Road. There will be legislation to hold a second reading pending Planning Commission recommendation.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
The new business.
I'd like to make a motion to read all new business by title.
Motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Yes. Very good. Mrs. Pennington has a family member that's involved in this next vote, so she recuses herself from the vote. Move on. All right. Councilmember Myers, or actually...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a simple motion, a motion to approve the following. Twenty-twenty-four boards and commission appointments effective April first, twenty-twenty-four. The first one is Kent Ersting. Environmental commission term expires March thirty-first, twenty-twenty-seven. Vivian Paul, environmental commission term expires March thirty-first, twenty-twenty-seven. Jeremy Powell, environmental commission term expires three-thirty-one, twenty-seven. Donna Kanan, environmental commission term expires March thirty-first, twenty-twenty-seven. Roy Conan, environmental commission. Partial term expires March thirty-first, twenty-twenty-six. Mark Pennington, environmental commission. Partial term expires March thirty-first, twenty-twenty-five.
Simple motion. Maybe have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried.
All right.
If you give me a moment, I'll go...
Mrs. Pennington, she can hear me out there. All right, under finance and budget, well, I guess let the record show that Mrs. Pennington is back in attendance. And under finance and budget, the timer.
We have six ordinances tonight for finance and budget. The first three ordinances are related to bond anticipation notes related to capital projects in the Public Utilities Department. The first ordinance addresses one-point-five million of new issuance related to the chlorine and fluoride feed systems at the water plant. The second ordinance is a renewal of bond anticipation notes from twenty-seventeen, nineteen, twenty-one, and twenty-three for various projects in public utilities. And the third ordinance is a combining ordinance to issue not to exceed five-million-eight-hundred-and-thirty-four-thousand in various purpose bond anticipation notes. This legislation was prepared with assistance from Bond Council at Dinsmore and Shoal. The fourth ordinance is to establish salaries, hourly rates, and number of certain employees. Specifically, this ordinance addresses unclassified, non-bargaining unit positions. The fifth and sixth ordinances are for contractual and non-contractual appropriations. The contractual appropriations total thirty-eight thousand and is for one project in the Public Utilities Department. The non-contractual appropriations total two-hundred-and-twenty-seven-thousand-five-hundred-and-seventy-one dollars and include eight projects from police, fire, parks and recreation, public utilities, and public works. Thank you.
All righty. And reading for Councilmember Brill is Mr. Myers.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have six items. The first item is an ordinance authorizing the issuance of not to exceed one-point-five million dollars of various purpose bonds anticipation notes, series two-thousand-and-twenty-four, by the city of Fairfield, Ohio, in anticipation of the issuance of bonds and declaring an emergency. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to suspend second and third readings.
Second.
Motion second for rule suspension. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried.
Thank you. Motion to adopt.
Motion second for adoption. Comments from council? Comments from audience? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried.
Second item is an ordinance authorizing the issuance of not to exceed four-million-three-hundred-and-thirty-four-thousand of various purpose bond anticipation notes, series two-thousand-and-seventeen, two-thousand-and-nineteen, two-thousand-and-twenty-one, and two-thousand-and-twenty-three, renewal by the city of Fairfield, Ohio, in anticipation of issuance of bonds and declaring an emergency. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to suspend second and third readings.
Motion second for rule suspension. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried.
Thank you. Motion to adopt.
Motion second for adoption. Comments from audience? Comments from council? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried.
Thank you. The third item is an ordinance authorizing the issuance of not to exceed five-million-eight-hundred-and-thirty-four-thousand of various purpose bond anticipation notes by the city of Fairfield, Ohio, in anticipation of the issuance of bonds and declaring an emergency. I'd like to make a motion to suspend the second and third readings, please.
Motion second for rule suspension. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried.
Thank you. Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion second for adoption. Comments from audience? Comments from council? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried.
Fourth is an ordinance establishing salaries for certain exempt and salary employees of the city of Fairfield, Ohio to repeal ordinance number twenty-seven-dash-twenty-four and all amendments thereto. I'd like to make a motion to suspend the second and third readings, please.
Second.
Motion second for rule suspension. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried.
Thank you. Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion second for adoption. Comments from audience? Comments from council? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried.
Thank you. The fifth is an ordinance to amend ordinance number one-sixty-two-dash-twenty-three, entitled an ordinance to make estimated appropriations for the expenses and expenditures of the city of Fairfield during a period beginning January first, twenty-twenty-four and ending December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four. Motion to suspend the second and third readings, please.
Second.
Motion second for rule suspension. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried.
Thank you. Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion second for adoption. Comments from audience? Comments from council? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried.
Last item is an ordinance to amend ordinance number one-sixty-six-dash-twenty-three, entitled an ordinance to make estimated appropriations for the expenses and other expenditures of the city of Fairfield, Ohio during a period beginning January first, twenty-twenty-four and ending December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four. Motion to suspend the second and third readings?
Second.
Motion second for rule suspension. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried.
Thank you. Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion seconded. All in favor? Oh, I'm sorry, comments from council? From audience? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried.
Thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Madam Clerk, can you read a meeting schedule?
Monday, April twenty-second, council manager briefing, six p.m., regular meeting, seven p.m. Monday, May thirteenth, council manager briefing, six p.m., regular meeting, seven p.m. Tuesday, May twenty-eighth, council manager briefing, six p.m., regular meeting, seven p.m.
Thank you. We'll move now to executive session.